We'll go ahead and get this meeting of the Visar City Board of Education called to order, please. It's October 27th, 2011, 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Dr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Dr. Hope?
Here.
Mr. Lipton?
Here. If you could all stand and face the flag and be side with us the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for attending the meeting this evening. I know there's a lot of things that we will be going over, a lot of things to begin with before we get to reports and that type of thing as well too, but we will be getting to everything as well before the regular business items that we have. The first order of business is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, which is September 22nd, and the work session, October 18th. Do I have a motion to approve both of those minutes?
So move.
Report. We have a motion and a second on that. Any discussion at all? Now roll call, please.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Dr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Lipton?
Yes, and that is approved. Second item of business there is to approve the treasurer's financial report dated September 30th, 2011. Mr. Jacobs, would you like to tell us a little bit about the financial purposes?
You'll notice in your reports that it's not... I have broken apart the SM2 comparative for you. Just a couple interesting items to note with that. The difference in the revenue from last fiscal year is down about 12%, which is sizable, and we're just trying to keep a new throughout the rest of the fiscal year. And the nice thing about this as well is that our expenses are also down, but only 2.3%. So right now those figures, while the expenses are down, which is what we wanted, I don't anticipate them levels to remain, and it's just not enough to compensate for these amounts of garbage that we've lost due to the financial issue. So it's something that we'll keep an eye on, and as the months progress, I'll let you know how we're doing. Federal programs do have both fiscal year 11 and fiscal year 12 updates. Fiscal year 11 is the actual close for those project years. We anticipate those additional funds that were that spent will be rolled over into fiscal year 12 within the next two weeks. Also, I've included in Omerita update, the healthcare benefits. Our end of year allowance for the quarter is just over $460,000, which is not as positive as our close for June 30th, but we've actually had some sizable plays. So I think we're in a good spot and had some present passive business coming down where we are. And then there was just a couple of adjustments for budget for these class members, bringing review in there as well. The rest is the data for the month and the tracking of the enrollment details as well as the grasp of your investments as well as your SBLs for the specific numbers that we're considering. Are there any known questions?
I know this is a... Is this a task?
Yeah, we have a couple that have come in, which is...
Is that a little worse?
Yes, yes, which is a good size. We've actually, I think I have invested to the point where, I mean, I've heard about our tax flow and what's invested at this point, and I have a couple of instruments out there that once they come through, I feel pretty good about the interest rate. I hate to be excited about what's going to turn, but right now what's going to turn is really interesting. It's a shame to have to say that.
Any other questions? If not all, entertain a motion to approve that financial report dated September 30th, 2011. Somebody?
Report.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Dr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Lipton?
Yes, and that has been approved. We do not have an agenda, so we can move on past that. Our first presentation to the board, Mr. Fisk and the band members about the band trip. Lord, yours.
Hi, my name is Mark Fisk. I'm the director of Visar High School, and I want to first begin by apologizing for any anomalies in my vocal and vocal tone. I'm just getting over cold and over tired today, and I was like Darth Vader and every time this sounds like a cancer temper issue. We're kids, love. We'll do my best. I'm here tonight to request your consideration for approval of the proposed band trip to Orlando, Florida for our parents in Disney World's National Theater musical parade. With the parade, our students put a sizable new audience to entertain and numerous opportunities for educational growth as well, such as trips we've traditionally done, the bands have done for band members for many years. The proposed itinerary would include stops of popular landmarks, restaurants, museums, and entertainment venues, but parade performance and ex-band stage performance that would showcase what we believe is one of our area's most viewed performing groups. I'd also like to point out that due to the still tentative nature of the proposal, there's still some flexibility remaining in that category. The most recent dates I've received from the travel company have been complicated. The numbers included on the overhead trips from my submitted, or actually made, December 9th through 14th. Visar's band parents and the high school band staff have experience with planning and logistics for this type of experience. And additionally, Visar's band parents and staff members plan a chaperone, provide security for this at every show, about three or four band members to every adult, and also to provide without the proxy provision of students while participating in the parade activities and in the hotel. To have your approval, band members who participate in this experience will be required to have completed seventh grade band and may not have any documented discipline problems or failed grades in classes during the season leading up to the trip. Reasonable payment plan has been arranged, and in fact, if we started collecting monthly payments today, those would amount to no more than $55 per month. And we projected the final trip cost to fall between $620 and $695 per student, which includes undercooked transportation and hotel accommodations, and breakfast and dinner each day in addition to all these expenses. An extensive number of hours has gone into the preliminary stages of what should be an experience that's safe, responsible, and educational for students. I believe this performance opportunity represents a historical call for educational experience that will elevate the performance of our students to previously unseen. I brought a few band members with me tonight who'd like to express their thoughts and enthusiasm for the opportunity that this will present, and I thank you for your consideration. And I'd like to conclude by thanking again for your time and on behalf of the members of the Visar Band Parent Organization and members of the high school band, respectfully request your consideration of this proposal, please. If I may reveal, I'd like to give...
My name is Ted Berlison, the first of the band officer. We have planned a trip for next December to Disney World in Orlando, Florida. Another trip is going to be expensive, we've already set the funding. Yeah, I think this trip will be a once-in-a-lifetime experience for more than one year. I think band members will learn about themselves by being away from the parents for so long and being self-aware and that by having the parents standard around the family. You learn about animals in the animal kingdom, which has over 1,000 animals, like 250 species. And they're part of the seven areas, which in each area, you can encounter real and fantastic animals and offer it from there. Animal Kingdom offers several unique animals, unique special experiences within the vast space, survived for insane expeditions, with a lot of adventures in the bands. And the fun will probably be riding rides and hanging out at a hotel and being at the pool and just having a good time. This trip is definitely a once-in-a-lifetime experience, since most people in the band probably haven't even been out of state yet. And some of them have never seen the ocean, so this will be a great experience for them, and thank you for your time.
Experience of once-again Orlando tour with Visar's band can be a good opportunity to learn new things, represent our school, and have a fun time. While at Orlando, us as kids can be able to learn more about ourselves. This trip will help us learn how to communicate with others, people who we are armed with every day. The Epcot Center is divided into two different sections. The first section is a place to ask the future world. You are able to learn about the living seas, living with the land, and journeys of your imagination. The second section is the world showcase. It showcases many of the countries and cultures around the world. Representing our school is important to us, and anywhere and everywhere we go, we always put out our best performance. If it's practicing a new dance routine or the memorization of a new song, there's nothing stopping us. Having fun is always a part of young adults' time, giving them the opportunity to explore cultures, countries, wildlife, and conservation, fun included, into every one of those adventures. We will be able to leave the world today and enter a magical new land full of funny dancing.
My name is Miania Linmore, and I'm a junior everybody here for Visar's type of marching day. Going to Disney World in Orlando, Florida will be a great opportunity for not only us band members, but services as well. And here they will represent our city and school systems with their amazing ability to challenge music, and our name is Martin Scott. We will show great pride in our school and work very hard to show everybody how much time and effort we put into performance. On the trip, I believe that everybody will find out who they are and discover the stuff they need to do as well. We will make friendships that will last for a lifetime and have amazing times coming up in all of that. We remember this trip for the rest of our lives. When we're older, we all want to be able to tell our children and their children, because when I was with the kids, our grandchildren, our grandparents, and our grandparents' kids. This trip will be fun, though, in GMP with amazing opportunities for inspiring young additions with ourself. I've never been able to say my friends, saying I want to Disney Land last summer, and I'm pretty sure a lot of people at this school are having it as well. Experiencing this feeling will make every single one of us very grateful. We all have been wondering how we are going to get money for this trip, so we all have that covered. We started fundraising about two weeks ago, and everyone started that up, and there's going to be more fundraisers coming up in the next few months. My fellow officers and I will do our best to tell everyone to raise as much money as we can, so they don't have to go to the hand pocket and try to give it up. This trip is the one life time experience, and I hope that you guys do it. I think you guys have time, so I'd be happy to do it.
Thank you very much. I know it's front on our board, a agenda for this evening, it's one of our discussion items at the end, so we'll discuss them afterwards. Thank you very much.
Aren't there several questions?
Yes.
Remember anything they would leave?
Yes.
You already have all the parents, you have all that set.
No, we're still kind of in the planning stage, so what would happen?
But you're pretty sure you know you're going to have one, that, or three, or four?
I thought maybe you were probably carrying.
You know, one day, they're going to find me on their bus, and they're not going to know what to do with me. It's going to happen.
Mark, do you see any reason why the institute would be in this way?
You know, one of the things that we traditionally got is, I would go out and check and see for failing grades. I know, you know, when it comes to down to things like that, that's really what's more important than finding out what's wrong. So there would be that. And the other thing that we keep an eye out for is anybody that's got a documented, you know, maybe physical discipline problem that they're involved with. So really just those two things. You know, we started fundraising with the idea that, you know, next year would be the fourth year, when we traditionally gave the trip. And so, you know, a lot of the cases have a pretty good start on that.
So you don't, you don't just pay finance for that issue?
Well, there is always an issue.
Or you hope, you hope that...
Right.
All right. Thanks. I'd like to say one thing, I know that Florida's not law and bill, but during time out, this is a band that camp, where they're home. The supervision of those top-notch and parents are tremendous as far as, you know, the nighttime chaperones and making sure that, you know, there's nobody causing it to happen. So supervision is very much mine, and I know that if they were taking Florida, that supervision would not be a problem at all.
In fact, just our last trip to Chicago, we noticed, we were there with many, many bands, there were a thousand band members from all over the country there. And they have big tents, where a thousand kids are in this ballroom, and we are standing at the doors watching our kids, and we're watching other bands' kids run up and down the halls, and we're crazy. We didn't let our kids leave the ballroom, go to the bathroom without one of us. And I mean, and you'll notice at football games, until third quarter, our kids don't go to the bathrooms by themselves, band, band members, watch, walk them, you know, and they're with them all the time. So Mr. Timmell is correct, the supervision is great.
Any further questions? I'd like to compliment the students for speaking.
On their own behalf?
Yes. As Mr. Gerber attests, it's sometimes been...
It's like you bring the message, but we can't go.
Next, next item of business that we have will be committee reports. Mrs. Stone, you have some things on the legislative?
I have not gotten any updates. I will tell the audience that at our work session, we passed a resolution to send to the House of...
May I interrupt? I'm sorry. If you guys, the band, would like to go ahead and leave, I know this is really interesting and stuff too, but we realize that kids do have homework in them too, so please go free.
Oh, that's true.
This is a new, exciting one.
Oh, this is, okay. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Anyway, on that note, at our work session, we did pass a resolution in opposition of House Bill 136 that talks about school loungers. I'm assuming that that got to where it needed to go.
Yes. We said November 12th.
Awesome, awesome. And I just want to remind everybody to vote on November the 8th.
Thank you very much. Any questions from Mrs. Stone? Okay, now, Dr. Johnson?
I know the fall season is holding you down. Other than that, I don't have anything specific on this.
I feel as soon as I get the fall season to one, we're going to have a Saturday. But, no, our boys' cross-country team will be running at it, even if it's a regional this coming Saturday, which is quite, you know, which done the best. I know the board will be voting this evening on a particular point for the athletes, and I'm encouraged to pass that. And the last thing is the seventh annual reverse raffle for Visar Boosters is coming up next month on Saturday, November 12th at the VFW. And I believe there's still some tickets available, so you could see any of our coaches or administrators or Mr. Jeffrey, do you have some stuff for sale for that?
Any questions at all for Dr. Johnson and Mr. Sheever? Okay, Pioneer and Mrs. Stone?
Pioneer was mostly just routine business this month, but I did bring this because I knew, like, they are going to start a new program next year, and I knew if I didn't bring it, I couldn't get the name right. Electricity Alternative Energy Course of Study is where they're going to start. So we did approve the textbooks and stuff for that. I'm not real sure what all that is going to contain yet, but that's new for me, because I'm starting this year.
My cousin's husband is an engineer, and he was like a lead engineer on the arena for the Minnesota Wild hockey team. He was a big time leader, and he went to work on alternative, a company that designed those type of things as well, too. It's an industry right now, and he's going to go up and have been making stuff.
That's a good thing.
Yes. Any further questions from Mrs. Stone at all? Student achievement?
Well, as part of our strategic planning process, we combined the curriculum committee and the instruction committee into one committee, which I think makes a whole lot of sense. And our first meeting will be next Tuesday, right, 4:30, at the board office. And if anybody wants to come and learn about what we're doing, or if they're pretty interested in instruction, you're welcome to attend. And that's all I have to report.
Okay. Any questions for the panel at all? Dr. Hope, wellness?
I have a couple things. One is, I'd like to give kudos out to Sedexo, they gave our backpack program, or just told me that a generous donation, two or three-year grant from Sedexo, we're the only system that I stand of theirs that they've done this in, stay alive. That's wonderful. The backpack program now has 80 participants in it, so we appreciate the donations and help, and it's something that's recorded whenever, and the old backpacks at home, please bring them in so we can help distribute foods to the children. The other item is an interesting one, it's actually, you know, we all, schools are always on the forefront of changes here, and, you know, we've been talking about VMIs and obesity and weight loss and all these other kind of things for having to monitor in our population. And it's alarming, from 1985 until 2010, obesity is a factor in our country, and more than 30% of our country right now has a BMI straight in thirty, which is defined as being obese. Seventy percent of our country is overweight. And the reason I'm bringing all these factors up here is there is a fix in line, hopefully, you know, sometime it's going to come soon, that we've been asked to monitor BMI for our children. The statistics I gave you are for adult population. Right now, they have no statistics on our youth, but we're seeing real bad trends in our youth. We're having, it used to be called juvenile diabetes and adult onset diabetes, now we're dealing with diabetes of adult onset happening in our youth. We're seeing problems with cholesterol in our youth. We're seeing changes that are alarming, they don't even call it juvenile diabetes anymore, it's just type one, and then this one, which is in the type two, which is insulin dependent. Forty percent of our youth now are getting the type two diabetes. And so with all these alarming factors that we're seeing, the focus again falls on us for nutrition, nutritional monitoring, and making sure that our food sources and intake and the sixty minutes of play a day is enforced in our children. So, you know, the take on point is exercise, soft skills really are important in our life, knowing diet and nutrition is important too, because what we see in our adult population travels down to our youth population, and pretty soon, we're probably going to be involved directly with monitoring weight in our population, in our school system. And that's just a prediction on my point, but I think the state's still debating on what to do with these statistics, and the first thing they have to do is gather it. So that's, that's the, and I think that's pretty much all I have to make of the word.
Any questions for Dr. Hope on the wellness? Okay, our student representative, Mr. Gerber?
I just have a few upcoming events going on at our school. Winford Week this week, our football game, everyone's pretty hyped up about that. I know next week is our mock election at our school. In government class today, we actually made posters by different issues, put them up in the hallways. That was a fun experience. Next week, Friday the 4th, is our band concert. Pretty fun, energetic, good show for you guys to come out and go and watch. That's all I have with upcoming events. I have some feedback on some of the issues mentioned in last week's, or last week's last month's meeting. Campus wear is a, is a pretty big topic for discussion at our school. Surprisingly, the majority was yes on that. Close race, though. Some of the students says that there'd be better performance within the classroom if we weren't worried about on our external looks. And one, and another point was if we do adopt the dress code, maybe a casual day would ease the people who don't agree with it. The people who said no said this because they don't believe that being dressed alike will help us learn any better, which I understand both sides, so I understand where they were coming from. They also said maybe khakis and slacks are more comfortable and would also be a distraction. That's another thing that came up. Like I said, a compromise was the casual day along with the code. I know some friends of mine that go to Pioneer, they have their dress code, but they also have dress casual, I think it's Fridays, I believe. I'm not sure on that actual day, but that's what I got on that issue. Another issue we talked about a lot was the student attendance to sporting events and other school-run events. This kind of goes along with Mr. Jeffrey's report from last month's meeting. Overall, like Mr. Jeffrey said last week, the students believe that, believe that our attitude about winning is improved, which I also feel strongly, being a basketball player. Last year, we were, we were pretty down a lot. We weren't doing well as a team, so we need to improve that. Some ideas brought up were maybe to start a student section club. A lot of the schools around here are doing it, Crawford's doing it, Winford started it. It's just an organized group of kids that want to show up to games and be energetic and have school spirit, organize chants in different tiers and stuff like that. We think at our school that it'd be important, and it would also help our team sell a lot. So I will, I was thinking about taking some other athletes and just some spirited students, and we're going to talk in a minute about that, and get some started up at the school. Another thing that a lot of the athletes in my class really thought would be beneficial for our attendance to sports was have our varsity athletes go to the elementary school. When I was in elementary school, I always remembered just being a little kid sitting in a chair and seeing varsity football players standing up front. And I always thought that was just the coolest thing, and that made me want to go to football games all the time. So we think that if we kind of like show ourselves more to the younger kids, they'd be more, they'd be more likely to show up to our events. Other ideas to help the attendance to events would be use our school Renaissance, use points as incentive and stuff like that. Maybe student season passes, people thought would be a good thing. And then, just coming from the athletes at our school, that we could get free or reduced prices to other athletic events, not just events inside your sport. We feel that sometimes money's kind of makes you win in high school, especially if you don't have a job, so that would, that would really help. But those are just, those are just thoughts. And lastly, an issue that has come up a lot, not just in my government class, but in the hallways, we're having an issue in the back hallway, the back bandroom hallway. Middle schoolers coming from their classes, high schoolers turning into their classes. But even though this is, this is a school issue, I just wanted to bring it up. We're going to have another meeting with Henderson about it. Teacher's concerned about people, uh, high schoolers being late to classes. It's just all that congestion, and that's pretty much all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Gerber?
I know that traffic down the back hallway is congested.
I know that, um, traffic down the back hallway is, is congested, not just in the hallway, but that stairwell for the middle school and high school needs. And, um, people are, are always, uh, when I tell them that sometimes the middle school students are, are more intimidated than the high school students, they're unbelievably frustrated. Students haven't seen you, you probably have tested that, they're kinda getting an arrow and they go down the hallway and packed. But, uh, we need to work some out with that back hallway because, uh, it is the only, maybe it's even a simple line or a piece of tape down middle floor and traffic on the right side. And, um, this wouldn't suck a road and every, other way it was, you know.
It's, it's under the belief too, uh, some high school kids, um, I try to, um, kinda lighten the mood. They think that, um, they're going down our staircases for, um, for their own personal reasons and they don't use their own staircase. I know that's, that's probably not the case, but, um, it's just people, um, high schoolers are getting kind of, but again, um, it's not a great issue right now. It's just, um, especially teachers are concerned about tardiness at classes and stuff.
It makes adjustments, uh, I believe in the morning after we experience the problem in classes, but a lot of people that know and, uh, through classes, we know it's traffic that we're getting. So, I encourage you to keep both ideas out there with your classmates and take those ideas to Mr. Henderson. And I appreciate you not just bringing a problem to him, but also having, you know, potential solutions for the problem. So, I hope that's important. So, both building around the same bell scale is correct, because we have so many students and staff that share. You know, we have high school staff that teaches middle school and high school, teaches high school. We have, we have, uh, eighth grade students taking high school courses from that, you know, so that, that they, it needs to be a single building on a single bell scale, but, um, some needs to be addressed with that traffic. And I think it's the most critical between fifth period and seventh period. It's traffic of, you know, a hundred and ten sixth graders going to lunch down that hallway. Then you got high school students coming up another way to get classes. And then seventh period or sixth period is seventh period and then eighth period or seventh period is eighth period. So, it's, that's the single hallway that the traffic too much. One of the things that the high school students could do coming out of the commons is use the front hallway to get to their classes and leave the back hallway to the middle school students to get to lunch.
I appreciate you taking the time, you taking the time to talk to your fellow students and bringing back how they feel about issues that we discussed here. And I really do appreciate that, especially I'm on the campus wear committee and it's, it's, um, that's interesting to hear that, that they're very.
Because the initial survey came back from the students in the spring and that wasn't yet up in my, um, in my report, but we'll jump to, to the discussion. The students were overwhelmingly not in favor of the board considering the campus wear or moving on policy. But, uh.
It was a slim margin, but let me ask. Yes.
Surveyed everybody or who, who surveyed?
Um, this is, um, this is, um, my government class, um, the other government class and then, um, people I asked in the hallways.
But wasn't the whole?
It wa, it was.
Oh, no. Yeah, I just figured it was just the people ran into this, uh, kinda let their feel.
Then I would refer you to go back and ask any of them that will, that are willing to, to, if they feel strongly one way or the other, even if it's within us, how this process works. Our next meeting is Monday, November seventh. And, uh, the student life committee starts at six and the dress code subcommittee starts at six thirty. So, I would encourage, you know, to get some representatives to come and, and listen to the study. And it's not, nothing's set in stone. The, the, the committee's looking at three options. One is keeping the current dress code the way it is. Option two is keep the current dress code, but, but with some additions, subtractions, some tweaking to the current policies. And option three is a campus wear policy that they're considering. So, those three options will be, uh, basically, um, taken out to the community, parents, students, staff and any opportunities for employment to provide, not just within our school zone, but we talked today with, uh, Roxelle Media about how we can get out and present it, boost your foot with the class. Uh, try to, try to have movies at the Rotary and the, the, uh, the, um, the different businesses in town and really try to get the B issue out there. What we don't wanna see is, we don't wanna rush into this, we don't want, we wanna make sure that there's ample opportunities for folks to see the whole story and then be able to provide that input to have an input, so.
Um, that was, that was, um, one of the other things a lot of kids were saying is, is can we, can we tweak the dress code we have now, maybe more Desires gear and, and just enforce that, try and get that kids to follow that better.
When did you say that?
Monday, November seventh.
Okay.
Six o'clock is the student life meeting, so, uh, dress code subcommittee is at six thirty, you know, you may just, uh, second it.
Okay. And just point of indication, government classes that are still mostly senior, closely senior.
There isn't even a dress code at Bullman Gym Stadium.
This would be interesting to see. It would be a great citizens' lesson or social play lesson, you know, that, that maybe if you approach this Fisher as the department, yeah, the social play, that maybe she'd be willing to work with the students to, to provide a opportunity for feedback if there is great work, it's not just like government.
I'm thinking of quick statistics while I'm here.
Bias and manipulativeness, if she would let me, um, maybe come into her classroom.
I think that's very offensive for you.
Thank you very much. Um, next on our list here is the superintendent.
Thank you very much. The reason for Mr. Henderson, Mr. Reynolds' absence, which matters, is that I kind of have these kinds of reasons I asked for the presence to remain in the building. So, uh, there is no school mall for students. Uh, due to conferences, it's hardly nine weeks is over with, um, quarter way through the school year. And, um, uh, some of the things that have been going on here this week, uh, we've had the fortunate stuff, had a hot and private education review, uh, site visits. Uh, and they met the dawn, I believe on Monday, started auxiliary service, uh, review. Yeah, it branched over into Mr. Burke's field, uh, as a preschool site visit yesterday and today, along with the high school and the, uh, secondary building and the elementary building had their twenty-first century after school site visit also. So, I appreciate Mr. Burke's, uh, attention to detail of that, uh, visit and, uh, mall indications, they were very happy with the visit and in fact, potentially waived our visit in the spring, uh, because of everything that was in line for this year. So, appreciate working with those programs. Uh, we also, uh, have been working with Roxelle Media. Last spring, we, uh, issued a safe, modern environment survey to all of our elementary students, all of our secondary students, all of our staff and the whole district. And we also, uh, gave an opportunity for our community and our parents to take the survey. We mailed the survey home to seven thousand four hundred households in the community in the spring addition of smoke signals. Uh, we were able to, uh, put the survey on one page and so the community members had an opportunity to take it online or take it on paper. And, uh, out of seven thousand four hundred smoke signals that we've, uh, sent home, sixty-two, uh, responses were returned out of that seven thousand four hundred. And the, uh, survey was self-addressed, self, that's self-stamped already, the post-it was paid for. And, uh, so we were just pointing on the, the side that we were giving up, uh, we believe, uh, enough, uh, inputs to, to make any, uh, great, uh, um, use of that data, at least from the parents and community students. But we did have a hundred percent students take the survey, a hundred percent of our staff. And so in, in doing that, uh, we really, even though we've been making changes with our, with our programs and how we do things in both the elementary and secondary, we haven't done a good job of communicating those results out to the public. And, uh, we met today and we'll be, uh, we'll be putting together a format that you're able to access, uh, this, uh, both on the website, Access TV, we're gonna run it on. It's also gonna be, uh, presented, uh, through the, uh, TV station at both the, uh, high, uh, secondary and the elementary, uh, to share the results from the survey. And it's basically gonna be, uh, this is what we learned from the survey and then here is what we're doing to respond to them. One of the things that, uh, the elementary students, we, we asked a little bit simpler questions to our elementary students. One of the things was, do you feel safe in school? And eighty percent of our elementary students said that they did feel safe, but twenty percent didn't. Out of the twenty percent that said they didn't feel safe, the place they felt they didn't feel safe was at, on the playground. Already this year, we instituted playground rules that haven't existed in elementary in the past. We've increased our supervision on the playground, uh, to try to head off those issues. Um, so those are some of the things that we wanna communicate out to the, uh, public and to the parents, uh, on things that we're doing. Secondary building, uh, we're implementing this big truth power, leadership, bad of stone and, uh, uh, and the work that Don Stankel, Matt Henderson's been doing. The teachers had their first inserts on that on Wednesday, uh, the aggressive bullying issues, harassment issues, intimidation issues. And, um, like I said, it isn't gonna change the climate, uh, overnight, but it's, uh, like a process that we're educating both the staff and students in bullying issues, harassment issues and intimidation issues. So, um, that's some of the things that we, we, we need from the results that we've, uh, and then look for that information to be shared out for the education at the next meeting and then also through the, through the different avenues of communication. And that's, uh, and that's my report.
Thank you very much. Now is our opportunity, uh, for us to hear from you, uh, the opportunity to address the board. Um, we do have two people that have, uh, asked to speak to the board this evening. Um, and we do remind you that our policy is that we have a five-minute limit on those as well. So, we'll, we'll still adhere to that this evening, but we do wanna hear your opinions and everything as well. Um, first person that I have here is Kathy Teicher.
Thank you.
For yours.
Okay, I, I'm not here to get anybody in trouble or point any fingers. And if there were bullying in school, I, I'm begging you, please do something about it. And please educate these kids on what can happen to them about getting in trouble legally, what can happen to other kids. My child, you know, this is in all these other schools, over fifty percent of it, is in med central and mental health unit. In the last year, they've had their four mental evaluations done on emergency cases, two in the last week. And even though we have already mentioned it, this is going to cost us thousands of dollars. So, really, I, you know, I, I'm begging you, even if you have to do something on, whatever, I mean, these kids need to know just because it seems funny, they don't know what the other person's life is like or what they're dealing with. Monday in the cafeteria, last Monday, my daughter got into an argument with another student. And according to other students I've talked to and my child, there was a lot of screaming, yelling, cussing going on. Other kids in the cafeteria got quiet with screaming, fight, fight, fight. When I talked to someone at the school about this, it was minimized saying that it was very minor. It wasn't minor for my child. It wasn't minor any other child. Um, Tuesday, my child was pushed down in the hallway and laughed out because of it. My person that had been making fun of her in English and has already been brought to school suspension. On Wednesday, this was all last week, my daughter said something to a boy that was playing, he's heading the locker and she told him he shouldn't do that, it's not good. Another kid told her it wasn't good to have her face in the floor. That's what my daughter did, that her woman. Which I had her evaluated, they'd gone home, we got everything okay by Sunday night, I had her back in her room. Um, I have looked at calling my child, I was going to call my child. I've been told by, at school that my child's focusing on herself? Of course she does. She has a disability, she's taking, she, she has depression going on. She, she doesn't call attention to herself at times, but I definitely feel these kids are very stupid. So, so I don't want to get anybody in trouble or point fingers. You know, last year, I had kids fall off home from school. I called two times, I could punch them in the face, um. I've had incidences where I've been to school numerous times over certain kids, and when my child had nothing, hit them back and my child was upset and nothing was going to be there. Even though I had been in there every day prior, I have seen three kids hurt bad enough in the last four years playing at the children's park though. I know one who has started homeschooling, has a two baby because of this, because last year, the week before she was banged up on my sister's name after him. What I get out of my daughter is, even if they look in the cameras, they're not gonna see it because the kids know where the cameras don't be, they know where to be. A lot of it is on the bathroom, it's true, you're looking at shit like this. Thank you for that, all I have to say, I just wanna give you my point of view from what my family's done for. And thank you, please educate these kids on if you think they're getting in a hole, obviously a lot of them are not. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Teicher. Uh, well, definitely, uh, like you said, we do value your, your opinion and everyone's opinion as well. Definitely is a, is an issue within our schools, uh, and not only here, but everywhere. It's, um, and there's an issue down in area too, and intimidation thing. So, we'll definitely take it under advisement. I know we have some things in Plano right there, but like Mr. King said, it's not anything that can occur right overnight, but, but it's something that's happening very, very quickly. Thank you for your, for your input there. Uh, the next person to, uh, uh, address the board, Valen Yalis. For yours.
Hi. Um, kind of difficult to follow, just, but what I wanna come here to say is, I am a grandparent of two kids that graduated from Desires High School. And I wanna say that, um, I'm proud that they went to Desires. And I'm here, um, to make a couple of suggestions now as a parent with children in college, um, junior and not freshman. And say that I want to first, um, give you kudos for changing a little bit with regards to the Renaissance program with my children. Especially my oldest one, were here, he'd probably kick me in the tush, because he exempted for a lot of exams during his high school career and didn't have to take those. I'm glad that you looked at and revised that a little bit. I know that as his first year in college, um, having to take exams and prepare for exams was a whole new experience. When he probably took one, um, the entire time he was in high school and only took it because he wanted to improve a grade. So, I give you kudos for changing that. I think it's important that all those kids experience what it is to take a test and prepare for those things. What I come to you to ask, I know that the freshman seminar class is still, um, something that is being, um, uh, required of all freshmen as they, um, go through their freshman year of high school. I know it is changed and revol, uh, evolved maybe, um, some. What I would like for you to look at doing is, um, I don't know, for all of you that have kids that are in college or have gone through college, um, like I said, note taking, knowing how to take notes in a lecture. How do you do that? How do you, what's important when a teacher is lecturing you? How do you go about taking those notes? And when you have to sit through lecture classes in college, it's way different than being in high school. Um, and I think that's something that we need to teach our kids. Um, we need to teach them how to take notes. We need to teach them what's important. You know, when a teacher says, and we have high school teachers that are saying, this will be on the exam or this will be on the test, letting them know and stressing that those are all things that you should be noting. On the same realm is study skills. Teaching kids how to study, how to, um, you know, when you're preparing for exams, you, how to go about that, how to study, how to, um, go through those things. Because our kids don't necessarily know how to do that. So, as a parent now of college kids, I stress to you, um, I know that now in that freshman seminars, a lot of writing and, and a lot of that type of stuff, that is great, they use a lot of that. But when you don't know how to take notes and you don't know how to prepare and study for an exam, you know, writing is only one piece of all of that as far as the papers go. Every class they take in college, they're taking an exam, they're taking a midterm and they're taking a final. And our kids don't know how to prepare for that. And I think that, you know, those are things that as a district. And I think that, you know, those are things that as a district, we need to start looking at to help improve our students. And it's going to improve our students in their high school career, taking them, preparing for tests, knowing how to take tests. You know, because a lot of kids don't actually know how to, I mean, you know, testing is a terrifying thing for kids. And, you know, they start testing in elementary school with the Iowa test, and I'm not sure what it is now, but that was it was back then. And, you know, in, you know, junior high, middle school, they're testing, they're testing their G T's and that kind of stuff. And kids, you know, some kids, whether they're an A student and a straight A student, don't test well. So anything I think that we can do as a district to help our students, you know, we're doing a lot of all the right things, but I think we're missing a few points on things that can help kids prepare and do better in school period. If all it is is high school, or when they go on to college and how they can do well in college. So that's my suggestion, recommendation as a school board is to look into how we can incorporate some of those things into that freshman seminar. And even younger, our kids need to start preparing and knowing how to take tests and teaching that young, you know. So that's my recommendation and suggestion. But kudos for changing the exam policy. I know not a lot of kids like that, especially if they got to take advantage of the other way. But they will thank you at some point in time when their kid's in college, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Something to refer on that Mr. Henderson and Mr. Woodwell.
Absolutely. And you know, the Renaissance, I say, it means recognition from the students. Initially, exam exemption or exam lock into this, and that way. And the students actually came in and said, here's what we think they have to eat. And with the lock in, and that, I I think it's a very compromise. It gives them the opportunity to be exposed to an end course exam, but not at the highest stakes and still rewards the big work that they've done over eighteen weeks. So, but you're you're exactly right with regards to studies and bills and no-taking. It's when you get to the explorer and plan test, one of the things we do is student inventory with that. It tells it asks students what you want that help in the school, and that was top, top one law in public speed. And we work with our staff and trying to incorporate, those are two of the areas of our ZONO and our NINE strategies that we've tried working over the years. We provide professional development with our staff, try to incorporate that with a regular classroom. And probably isn't, isn't given delivered to the to the level it needs to be. So, you know, if this day and age with the finance, I'm not sure a separate course can get forward, but we definitely can do a better job, you know, in classrooms and teaching that at every time that level.
Well, I know your Renaissance program, or your your freshman seminar class could be the, a perfect blend. I mean, I think the writing part, and I'm not exactly sure what all that looks like now, but I think that's a good place to start with some of that. I don't know what all they put into that class now, but it's certainly not occurring the way that it should in a classroom setting. And, you know, I think that's, it needs to be a focus at times of the class. And it's difficult when you're trying to teach math and you're trying to teach social studies to incorporate that into that, you know. And I I understand it not being a separate course, but I think you have a perfect stage already with your freshman seminar class to use a couple of weeks' worth of that time to focus on that. Writing is just one piece of it, and if they can't do the other things, it doesn't matter how well you write. Because college isn't all about just writing that paper, it's about taking that exam and preparing for those things.
When I was a freshman, in our freshman seminar class, it was the old way. We did watch videos on how to take notes, granted, high school, yes. I don't know if it would, it would help us in the college room. But we did watch videos on how to take notes. We did a lot of study skills, we watched videos, a lot of videos. I think it really helped us. And from my understanding, that year after us, was the year they switched to the more of the English-based freshman seminar class, which I thought was a great idea to help that, help out with their writing in English schools and stuff like that. But from kids that have said that they don't do a lot of note-taking in that class, I think maybe if we kind of mess it better with with the note-taking and then adding writing along with it.
I just happened to be in two classrooms this week, and I was going to blow that up. But the two classrooms I visited at the secondary building, they were both, teachers had told me, they see a lack of it, the students don't know how to. And I said, you can't assume that students know, we tell them to take notes. And they have revamped the lessons for the last couple of weeks. And they're sitting there specifically showing them to highlight. The teachers are highlighting using the smart board and everything, one little paragraph. And then the students do the next one, and it's still on the content of the teaching. And they're saying that to help the students learn, we just tell them to highlight, you know, just highlight the importance. Well, they're highlighting everything. So they've gone back to show them how to highlight and how to take notes. Through the two particular classes I visited just this week, noticed that that happens to be an issue at the secondary level. And we just assume when the kids get there, they know how to take notes. So they have revamped their lessons, they're just happy to be on the week. And it's not an all, but they are making a new stride.
And I know that having talked to a few teachers, this, I mean, that they realize that's an issue and, and, you know, but trying to get it back into their classroom, where do you fit that in at? And, you know, and and the videos are great, but I think they need the hands-on. And I think that what the teachers are doing will help those students with their their high school work as well as further on, if that's where they go.
Just what I'm observing, it's happening at the college level, it's happening everywhere, the use of webinars and interactive collaborative teaching with students teaching themselves and studying together. And before, we used to be so strict of teacher teaches, student listens, and writes. And we're developing a different type of system for critical thinking that's really improving. And I think we're starting to see this going into the the high school. I hope it's, I hope it's being done more, but we had a presentation here with somebody presenting a Facebook like that, where students are communicating with each other. And that, that's a sort of a new trend, but I think it's really important that we emphasize that. In other words, if kids are having problems with study skills and they get together in groups and they work with each other and those type of things, they can, for instance, where I went to school at in Ohio University, they would send a webinar over the internet. And the guys would be studying in Columbus, they would get together in class, sit there, stop the web, at one point, stop, go to the chalkboard, write out the concepts, teach each other. And these are the kind of things that is developing, it's completely different from the didactic ways that we teach. And we're getting away from didactic teaching, I think that's part of what you were complaining about too. So I really, I'm I'm in favor of, you know, everything you said, I I've dealt with the same thing with two kids who didn't have to take an exam during that time, and I've been on Kevin and and Dr. Nichols about the same issues for a long time.
Thank you very much. And I just want to thank both parents for coming out and speaking. You know, sometimes parents are reluctant to do that for lots of reasons, so thank you for coming out and sharing with us.
Well, I thought there were going to be other parents here tonight, and some of them were going to speak, but they didn't, so I showed up, so I went in.
We appreciate it, definitely. Next item in business is the personnel certifi-
Vice President, members of board. Under personnel certified staffs, recommend the Board of Education A, per one-year limited sub-mental contracts, as per approved sub-mental salaries schedule, for the following personnel. The 2011-2012 school year, Director Kirkpatrick, pending completion of all state board requirements, two. Robert Shuttler, Assistant varsity wrestling coach, David Ue, Aaron Eckert, Assistant varsity baseball coach. Jeff Fisher, Assistant middle school basketball coach. Ken Wurk, Teacher Leader, who changed from the 9th/22/2011 meeting. Amanda Kent, Home Instruction Tutor, on an as-needed basis, timesheet. Sean Mosley, Assistant Freshman Basketball Coach, half contract. Jason Nickler, After-School Tutor, steady cable. Jason Nickler, Home Instruction Tutor, as-needed timesheet basis. Item B, approved a one-year volunteer contract for the 2011-2012 school year, pending completion of all state board requirements, including a viable background check, two. Jay Dennison, Volunteer Assistant Baseball Coach. Item C, approved Mark Burke, 21st Century Community Learning Center's Program Administrator, to be paid per day and hour on a timesheet basis for night and weekend events, not exceeding sixty hours or $2,300 for the 2011-2012 school year, effective July 1st, 2011, and to be paid by the 21st Century Learning Community Grant. Item D, approved a limited sub-mental contract for after-school tutor substitutes, up to three and a half hours per day, up to four days per week, not exceeding 131 days for the 2011-2012 school year, to the following personnel, effective September 26th, 2011, at $27 per hour, to be paid from the 21st Century Community Learning Center's grant. Judy Fry, Kim Haldeman, Doris Pramit. Item D, approved leave of absences without pay for the following personnel. Robert Ginter, December 19th, 2011, for personal reasons. Kelly Carter, November 22nd, 2011, for personal reasons. And item F, approved substitute teacher list from the Middle Ohio Education Service Center, as per exhibit A.
Do I have a motion to approve the personnel certified staff items A through F?
So move.
The report. The motion, in a second, in the discussion, I'm going to need those items. Roll call, please.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone? Yes, Mr. Cheever?
Yes.
Dr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson? Yes.
And the personnel certified staff items have been approved. Superintendent Kimmel, the personnel certified staff.
President, members of the board, it is recommended the Board of Education A approve the informant John Chris Stratton as a food service truck driver slash building custodian, six hours per day, 260 days per week, effective September 22nd, 2011, pending proper certification, available background checks, and completion of all state board requirements, to be paid as per their approved salary schedule. Item B, approved leave of absences, approved leave of absence without pay for the following personnel. Jim Deppart, October 31st, 2011, for personal reasons. Item C, approve a limited sub-mental contracts for the 21st Century After-School Program, to the following personnel, effective September 26th, 2011, to be paid from the 21st Century Community Learning Center's grant, as per their approved salary schedule. Tenure Billings, Secretary, up from 1.75 hours per day, four days per week. Kathy Connect, A, up to four hours, up to four days per week, effective October 3rd, 2011. Linda Snyder, A, up to two hours per day, two days per week. Deb Stegall, A, up to two hours per day, two days per week. Item B, approve a one-year limited sub-mental contract, as per approved sub-mental salary schedule, to the following personnel for the 2011-2012 school year, Director Kirkpatrick, pending completion of all state board requirements, including a viable background check, two. Robert Bailey, Assistant Middle School Girl Basketball Coach. Diane Hardy, Assistant Middle School Swim Coach. Michael McPerry, Assistant Freshman Coach, half contract. Zachford Nest, Mentorship, Assistant Middle School Basketball Coach. David Wannandi, Assistant Wrestling Coach, Middle School. Item B, approve a one-year volunteer contract for the 2011-2012 school year, pending completion of all state board requirements, including a viable background check, two. Wes Likely, Assist, or Volunteer Assistant Baseball Coach. Douglas Wannandi, Volunteer Assistant Wrestling Coach. Item F, employ the following personnel on a substitute basis, as per approved salary schedule, for the 2011-2012 school year, pending completion of all state board requirements, including a viable background check, two. Robert Bailey, Amy Buell, Sharon Cable. Item G, accept the resignation of classified substitute Deborah, Deborah Long, for effect of October 3rd, 2011.
Do I have a motion to to accept the personnel classified staff items A through G? So move. Any discussion on those items? Roll call, please.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone? Yes. Mr. Cheever?
Yes.
Dr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes. And this item has been approved. Superintendent Kimmel, the business item, please.
President, members of the board, it is recommended the Board of Education A approve a resolution of sub-mental amounts and grades as determined by the budget commission and authorize a necessary tax rate and certify an empty accounting order as per exhibit B. Item B, accept the Desires City Schools Education Foundation grant, teacher mini-grants, per exhibit C awarded, two. The Bridges Grant, Kim Haldeman, in amount of $1,000. Teacher mini-grants, Nicole Houndball, for $499. Marie Stuckman, for $380. Clarissa Lido, for $500. Item C, approve the 2011-2016 Athletic Teacher Plan, as per exhibit D. Item B, approve permission for Clarissa Lido to coordinate the elementary academic challenge team. All expenses will be paid through the grant awarded by the Desires Education Foundation, as per exhibit E. Item B, grant a request for early completion of the graduation requirements to the project. Gerhardt, as per exhibit F. Item F, approve a contract to Gallon City Schools, transporting their student from Pioneer to the Future Program in Shelby, as per exhibit G. Item G, enter into agreement with the Middle Ohio Education Service Center, M O G S C, the Future Program, Shelby, Ohio, to provide special education services to students with emotional disabilities for the 2011-2012, as per exhibit H. Item H, approve personal changes for the 2011-2012 Middle Ohio Education Service Center contract, as per exhibit I. A, Pro Pocken Elementary, A. Amanda Burkord, Secretary, resignation, effective October 24th, 2011. Attendance, Eric Graham, Elementary, resume, resignation, effective October 15th, 2011. Brandy Senior, preschool, res, resignation, effective to October 24th, 2011. 21st Century Learning Community Grant, After-School Program Personnel. Kim Crisband, name correction from previous board agenda. Victoria Dormier, Secondary and Elementary Tutor. Dee Hatcher, Elementary, A. Linda Hess, Elementary, A. Brandy Senior, Elementary, A. Renee Stratton, Elementary, A. Item I, approve the transfer of Music and Youth Program funds to the High School Speech and Drama Club, as per exhibit J. And item J, accept the following donations, as stated, Desires City School District's Staff Scholarship Fund for the Desires City School District employees, in amount of $139.50. Redd Football Scholarship, Jacob Brunner, in amount of $3. Work Study Program, David Fight, in amount of $100.
Do I have a motion to approve the business items A through J? Any discussion on those items?
Just on our end, those two, you pointed out, Mr. Jeffrey, he did a very good job, shepherding the project. I'm officially complimenting him and all the teachers, the teachers that were, the coaches involved, our staff, and also our community members who are involved. If we worked the plan as written for our athletic program, it would be much better.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone? Yes. Mr. Cheever?
Yes.
Dr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes. And the business items have been approved. We have three items on our discussion agenda this evening. First one is the March of Dan and the Amsterdam Crystal Ramada for exhibit A. Can we see J? What was on that?
I would like, if no one has a problem with going ahead and approving it this month so that they can get busy. And they always do such a nice job preparing for it, coming and asking us to go. And, I mean, I mean, they do, they do a nice job. They set everything out for us to know when they're going, where they're going to be. If no one has a problem with it, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to accept, to let them go ahead and start continue fundraising without having to wait another month to know whether they're going to go or not. And, um...
Support.
Yeah, I could grab one.
Thank you. Cut it off.
Cut it, bring out the change.
We have a motion, motion in a second here. We have a motion, a motion and a second here. Uh, it's going to be further discussion on this.
I think we should love it to be very well, so. Still passed.
Okay. If not, we give a motion on, on the table, maybe we'll roll call on that, please.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Dr. Dr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkens?
Yes. Yeah. Okay, so that has been passed and, you know, continue fundraising, please. Make sure you fund the rest of the land. We're further back to. Okay. Um, item, item B on the discussion list is the board policy updates as per exhibit I, exhibit L, I'm sorry. That's why I'm coming in the last one. Exhibit L, um, uh, those are in our board packet. Um, it's not anything that we're looking for approval now, correct? Just to look at them, please, and we will be approving the rest, maybe.
Both of them aren't wanting to keep up with current bills and the tax. So it is keeping us in compliance.
Okay.
A lot of the crux of it is to keep up with all the genetic research they're doing right now. Like, for instance, what I was just talking about, the obesity test. They found 24 different genes that can predict somebody can become obese. And so they're, they don't want us to say, okay, based on the genetic information, we're not going to hire this one, this one, or this one. This one based on discrimination. So I think that's a big thing.
I think you're just saying to make sure that we perform some kind of surgery in order to.
We predict a whole lot of things outside.
Okay.
It's the same stuff repeated several years ago for, uh, certified staff, classified staff administration. So it's, it's repeated three different times. The same language chain. Maybe just see what the chain does coming down here.
Okay. Um, so look at those, please, for next meeting's board meeting. Um, item C on the discussions, they're all coming, the board's dinner in Middle Ohio, 6:00 PM, Monday, December 5th. Do we have anybody that wants to say yes to we'll be going at this moment?
I should be there.
I should, I'm in, I should be there as well.
I don't think I had a date, the Mars can see that it will, will have plenty of time to move on. Maybe five, I would be telling them, they're on, they should check the pounders. Maybe this step in November will be prepared, like, you know, and I can, uh, I can look out in the light.
I'm trying, um, putting this in here, okay? Um, any communications at all? Any announcements? I guess we have Capitol Conference coming up.
These are really kind of subtle indications. Um, so, I don't know, um, maybe we could, they have to put this in there to let me know which ones you might need in our group. I think that's good. Um, I have one.
The only announcement that I know of that's not the severe is just to remind everybody to vote on election day. A lot of things, not only the board issues, but statewide issues, that could affect us dramatically. Um, stopping from everything else in here as well. So, please get out and vote, please. Vote your conscience. Um, we don't want, you know, just a few people out there and then everybody to vote. So, everybody's all ready to hear. Any other announcements? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Right, a second. Um, roll call, please.
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Dr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkens?
Yes. And our meeting is adjourned.
Go ahead, please.